In making the shift away from the oversaturation of HMOs in traditionally residential areas. So for that reason, I'm inclined to vote against the proposal. But I just wanted to ask a question as a planning officer around. Maybe the adverse impact that this particular development will have on on the light affecting the neighbouring properties. There's a point raised and you've come the officer on that. We appreciate that.
If you don't mind, councillor Lavelle, we'll leave that till the end when I normally have our planning officer present. But we'll remember that this this point needs answering, if that's okay with you.
Aye, thank you.
Yeah, and I'll invite councillor Bradford to come back in on this one. And I'm going to make a point that I think is valid on this as well, but after councillor Bradford. Councillor Bradford.
Thank you very much, chairman. Sorry there's a delay on pressing my buttons on the phone. My apologies. And the other thing that concerns me is Whitland Road is not one of the roads, the larger properties, where we have a problem getting families to move in. It is a very traditional terrace street off Elm Vale with a very distinct community, which is very settled. And I'm wondering whether is it proportionate to have seven students moving to what is a basically a two up or a three bedroom terrace house? What community space is there for cooking and, you know, socialising as students will want to do after they've done their studies? And is that the right property for it? And also, if any of them have cars, Whitland is actually on the corner with Whitcroft Road and actually is a very narrow tight entrance that feeds into the street. So more than one car parking could actually cause a visual congestion problem on that road. It's, I'm going to be honest, I know the road incredibly well because one of my, two of my pressing employees lived actually on Whitcroft, based in the property. And one of your own former councillors lived over at number five. So I do know the vicinity very, very closely. So I'm really wondering if it is out of proportion, the number of students in such a small property? And with seven, is it realistic to believe none of them will have cars?
I think the points are made. I wanted to make one other point, and that is that possibly people don't realise this, but I did do quite a lot of work with students at the medical school and veterinary school at the University of Liverpool. And I do know that at that time, they were moving out of Kensington, not because it wasn't convenient. They thought it was highly convenient. It was because of a lot of the problems that I saw in the areas around them and just social behaviour. So I think that I would accept George's point that students are willing to live there under the right conditions. But then other councillors have raised the point that local residents might not like the students being there. And we know that in Green Bank Ward, all this car parking problem has been immense. But nevertheless, is the planning committee able to determine who lives in a property? The answer very shortly is no. So I'm going to hand over now to the objectors.
Chair, just to intervene briefly, we have councillors Hanson and Cummings, who have now both indicated that we should comment.
Oh, yes, of course I must come in, but it's not coming up on my screen, Michael. That's the trouble. So councillor Hanson first.
Thank you, Chair. I'm sorry, as I'm used to being ignored. Looking at the report, it's got ground floor, one bedroom, first floor, three bedrooms, second floor, three bedrooms. We've got one bathroom to facilitate seven people, minimum of seven people. Because you expect on occasions the students would have people sleeping over and doing whatever, whatever, whatever. But as equally important, there is no cooking facilities. There is no kitchen in there on any of the floors. So here we've got a government pleading with the population to start eating healthily, to start doing whatever, whatever, whatever. Yet we have seven people who in essence will be living out of takeaways, whatever, whatever, whatever. And the, at the point that councillor Bradford made, I don't know the area that that well. But again, is reasonable to suggest that none of those students would have a car? I don't think it is reasonable. So I think I'm sort of being swayed towards Anthony Lavelle's position, where I don't think I'll be supporting this application. I think it's a poorly thought out application. I think the developer is actually insulting to the students that will come into Liverpool to move into what, there's one kitchen dining area? Absolute nonsense. I really think the developer needs to go away and have a look at what he develops. And is he going to develop something decent for student population to live in? So Chair, what I've listened to now, I won't be supporting this.
Who else, who else was going to come in, Michael?
Councillor Cummings next, Chair.
Yes, councillor Cummings, if you'd like to make your comment or question, please.
Okay, Chair. And I will make it very short and sharp. I agree with the and I find it astounding that it was a six, it was a six bedroom property. And yet you wanted an extra person to be in that property with the circumstances of what councillor Hanson has just said.
Now, councillor Wires, I can see you clearly indicating. So would you like to come in now?
Yes, Chair. I have a problem with this application. I think the property is too small to accommodate seven people. And, you know, we've just been through, you know, extraordinary circumstances where we've all been under lockdown in our houses. And, you know, being in lockdown, we know family isn't bad enough. But, you know, seven people in a tiny house and, you know, rattling around. I think, you know, this is really not, it's not acceptable for the government to expect this from people to rattle around. And, you know, it would affect their mental health. You know, I'm just not going to be able to support this application, I'm afraid. The property is inadequate and it does not provide enough space for seven people to rattle around if there's going to be a further lockdown in the foreseeable future. Or we're going to have to spend a lot more time in our houses studying or working. I can't support the application, I'm afraid.
And councillor Wires, now I think we need to move on with this. We've got at least four more people who want to speak. So I want to invite just all Christine Sosa, I think it is, and then John Dernian. So can we start with Christine, please?
Chair, before we bring in our objectors, can I just ask you to unshare your screen? I think you've inadvertently clicked on share. Just makes making viewing easier for colleagues.
Well, I don't know how to do that, so you'll have to stop me. Because I had a lot of trouble.
I'm going to take control back, Chair.
Yeah, I have my tableled motions open. And to get back to full screen to try and see everybody indicating, I'd probably press the button inadvertently.
That should come on better now for everyone now, Chair.
Better, thank you. So are we going to get Christine to come on now, please, Michael?
Thank you, Chair. I, we have sent invitations, obviously, to those who register to speak. I don't believe, however, we have Miss Salsa present to speak today at today's meeting. So let's just move to our next speaker, Miss McGann.
Yeah. Would you like to come in, Miss McGann?
She is, she is present on the call, Chair.
Can you unmute so we can hear from you, please, Jay McGann?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Would you like to go ahead? You've got up to three minutes.
Hi, so thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. And I wish to strongly object to the plans to transform this very small terrace home into a house of multiple occupancy for the following reasons. Liverpool City Council previously made promises to restrict the number of HMOs in the Kensington and Fairfield ward. Feel the decision to grant this will be incompatible with the council's previous promise to the residents within the ward. We are really highly populated with HMOs. And this is probably one of the last roads within the ward that doesn't have an issue with HMOs currently. And I feel grantness will open the door to other people to develop in what is a really quiet family road. Parking is also extremely limited and unavailable. And converting a small terrace house into a seven bedroom HML could lead to severe parking problems. It could bring an additional, say, seven cars, up to 14 if you have visitors. And this has had a significant impact on road safety. I have a disability and I have issues with mobility and I already find it really hard to park in the road. People have multiple cars. And I think this application is ill considered and doesn't take into consideration the safety fears and parking restrictions. The ward is also one of the most deprived areas in the UK. The council made a commitment to regenerate this ward to help those that live in the area. Agreeing to allow yet another HML, we'll not regenerate the ward, but it'll only serve to increase the levels of social deprivation within the ward. You only have to walk to the next row by model, sorry, to see the negative impact the HMOs are having on the area. The road is extremely run down. The properties are really unkept. And there's a lot of fly tipping, a lot of antisocial behaviour. And this is the precedence to other people of non-local businessmen with no community ties, taking advantage of low property prices and turning one of the only remaining residential roads into a HML. I've included quite a lot of reports and studies that support the claims the HMO do lead to a lack of social cohesion, cohesion, antisocial behaviour, increased parking pressures and reduction on, sorry, community services and family homes. These were conducted by the Welsh Government. And there's also extreme links between HMOs and the increase of modern day slavery and human trafficking, with a lot of vulnerable people linked to these properties, because there's a lot of transient communities. And these are again are supported by the gang master labour association and also the committee for local government. In recent times, a lot of other police forces as well are rejecting bids for HMOs due to the increased levels of crime within the area. I've read the recommendation report and a summary provided. I don't agree with the point made that the HML will not have an impact on antisocial behaviour within the area. The author of the report obviously is not from the area. It doesn't mean the negative experience that we face on a daily basis as residents. I avoid walking down certain streets in the area because of safety fears. We're already in a really high crime area with levels of street prostitution and drug use. And the increase in HMOs is proven to cause rise in criminal and antisocial behaviour and will increase the fear of crime within the area. And adding yet another HML will only serve to increase the antisocial behaviour and criminality. Allowing the proposal to go ahead will be detrimental to the residents and would seriously impact community cohesion. And sort of, I recognise that there's a need for HMOs in Liverpool. I'm not disputing that. However, I believe that they need to be divided equally between all wards and not solely focused within Kensington and Fairfield like they are. We're already extremely overwhelmed and we don't need any more. As a local resident, we do feel quite like we're on our own and our voices are not being heard. This application received 12 written objections and a signed petition, yet the recommendation is still to go to head. As a, as a member of the ward, we feel that we need, our views of local residents need to be put ahead of those of businessmen who are trying to profit on low property prices within an area. I feel that there is a view that there's a sort of a strategic abandonment or managed decline of the area and would allow law into further deprivation and poverty with the increase of HMOs. And this is all a detriment to the local residents. Corporate interest does seem to take a priority over local residents concerned. And as somebody with community ties, I don't want to see our community go into further decline. I can see if this is granted, in 10 years' time, there'll be no residential homes left in the area. They'll be taken over by students, accommodation and HMOs. And I'd like the council to follow up on the promise to reduce the amount of HMOs within the ward, as this is one of the few remaining family streets within the area. And we do risk losing them. Again, I say thanks for giving me the opportunity to raise my concerns today. And I hope the committee will consider the impact on local residents when they make the decision. Thank you.
Can I now call upon John Donnelly and then offer an opportunity for members to give any questions to the objectors? So John, can you come in now, please?
Hi, Chair. Yeah, to be honest with you, Jay McGann just summed up perfectly my feelings. I've lived in the area all my life. And I'll be honest with you, there's been times recently about that depressed about this HMO culture that I've been thinking about maybe moving away. And I desperately don't want to do it. But I feel I'm getting to a situation where I have no choice. Yeah, as I said, Jay McGann summed up perfectly what I wanted to say, so that's all.
Now, are there any questions for members? Michael, I can't see anybody indicating.
There aren't any further ones, Chair, but we do have councillor Liam Robinson registered to speak as well.
So councillor Robinson, would you like to come in now, please?
Yes, I certainly would. Good morning, everybody. And I'm going to echo much of what other objectors and members of the committee have said. Because on behalf of myself and my two ward colleagues, Wendy Simon, Sue Walker, and countless other residents that absolutely couldn't make today's meeting, we're fully and formally objecting to this proposal. As has already been said in the discussion, our area is already saturated with a large number of houses of multiple occupation. It's having a real negative and problematic impact right across our community. It's leading to a much more transient population in the area, people not putting down roofs. And it's at one level that leads to issues with rubbish and bin collections not being dealt with properly, all the way through to more acute issues like crime, antisocial behaviour, noise. And as some of the other speakers have already pointed out, the issues of drug dealing, sex working in nearby streets are linked to HMO type properties. We've got a real concern that another one, particularly in one of the streets that, as already been pointed out, is still very much a family based street, will only have a further negative impact right across our community. We also think this property is completely unsuitable for a seven bed HMO. This really is one of the worst examples of overdevelopment. As a seven bed property, as other people have already pointed out, it's quite likely that the residents, be they students or any other resident, I'm personally sceptical, they'll all be students, could have their significant others staying with them overnight. That could lead to up to 14 people in the property on some occasions. As was already pointed out by councillor Hanson, the amount of bathrooms seems to be inadequate. Fully acknowledge that there are two bedrooms that have got en suite facilities, but that would still leave five bedrooms, fed bedrooms, having to share one bathroom. So effectively, potentially up to 10 people on one occasion having to share one bathroom. We believe that's completely inadequate and absolutely unhygienic. People have also referenced the issue about parking. I notice in the report that is before you, it says that there is no issue with parking. Well, I have to say, if you've gone down that street of an evening or of a night time, when everyone tends to be at home, there is a significant issue with parking. And any of those residents that may be living in the property having a car will only add to those issues further. So we have real concerns about that equally. My final point as well, just to keep things succinct, is that we also believe that the dormer that's proposed is particularly unsightly, particularly in view of the fact that this property is on the gable end of a terrace street. This isn't something in the middle of terrace street that you wouldn't be able to see. It will, yeah, be something you can directly see when you turn the corner. We think that will kind of really negatively impact the visual amenity of the local street. Summing up all of those different points that others have already made, we strongly object to the proposition and would ask that this is turned down by the committee today.
Are there any questions for councillor Robinson? Yes, we have one here. Would you like to, who's coming in? Is this George?
Chair, the agents and applicant would like to respond if the committee is agreeable for that.
I see. Yes, if the committee is agreeable, can we bring George back in, who's the applicant? Unless anyone objects, I'll let him come in. Would you like to come in then, please, George?
Thank you, Chair. What I would like to say is that the property already used to be rented out as six bedsits. Now, one extra bed, you know, bed is not going to make a big difference because they can go back and rent it into six bedsits. Now, you see, you have to see the impact one extra bed would do into the property. Now, six beds, they didn't have any they have a small kitchen, they didn't have any common area and they didn't have any space for bicycles or cycling. We propose all this, as I explained in the past, you know, before. The seven bedroom is going to be in the dormer at the back with permanent development. The, 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 the client, my clients are allowed with permanent development to have a full length dormitory permission. I refuse to decide the length of the dormer, thinking about the goodwill of, you know, the neighbours, the neighbourhood, how the impact is going to have to the properties nearby. What I was going to say to you, I don't see two students can afford any, you know, sort of cars. Even in the property, it was rented out as a family home. It would have two cars, right? Every average family home would have two cars. Now, seven students, I doubt it if they are going to have all of them one car. They go, the students that can afford bicycles, electric bicycles these days, they walk in to go to the pastures. And the property is nearby to Elm Vale, which is close by. And most of the houses there, they are converted to HMOs. Is that what I want to say? And thank you very much.
Now, I'm going to pass over to the planning officer. John, to address councillor Lavelle's question. I did promise to get an answer to. So I'll have to, John?
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, members of the committee and people viewing this committee meeting. My name is John Hayes. I am the team leader for development management in the north of the city. Chair, you've obviously got a full report in front of you that sets out the planning issues and your officers' conclusion in relation to those particular matters. And obviously, this is a very familiar type of application to members of this committee. You've heard some very impassioned speeches there from the ward councillor and from members of the public who are going to be affected by that proposal. And obviously, these are concerns that rightly you have raised on a number of occasions and obviously are familiar, as I said earlier, to this committee. I think rather than going through all the issues, what I'll try and do is go through the various points that have been flagged up by individual councillors. And I think as part of that, it might help if we can get the plans back on the screen, particularly in terms of the, some of the issues that have been raised about the internal room sizes and the disposition of spaces. So if you can get those on while I'm talking, that would be really, really helpful. And so picking up on the issue of the dormer, councillor Lavelle commented, he was concerned about the potential impact of light on the adjacent property. Clearly, that's referenced, I think, in the report. The officer's conclusion here is it would not have an impact on light. I mean, it obvious that it will be something that will be visible. It will present a further structure on that roof of the property. But your officer's view is that would not be harmful impact in terms of the amenity of the adjacent property. And as the agent has just pointed out, these are ordinarily permitted development in any case. And therefore, there's little control. There's an assumption sort of built into the permitted development regime that these are acceptable structures. So that's, that's my comment in relation to that. Obviously, councillors Radford and councillor Robinson have raised the issue of the impact of the number of cars that might potentially use the site. Again, that's addressed in the committee report. Your officers' experience of these types of properties is that they tend to have significantly lower rates of car ownership and that where there are cars, they can usually be accommodated within the street without harm to residential amenity or highway safety. In relation to the overall numbers occupying the property, again, I accept what councillor Robinson says. But again, your officer's experience is that the, they tend to be occupied on a sort of one person per room basis. There may well be occasions where somebody stays over, but there is a condition on the recommendation that require seven people to be occupying this property as their permanent residents at any one time. And clearly, if that was breached by a more permanent accommodation, then your officers could investigate that and follow that accordingly. In terms of the sort of wider impacts in terms of the amenity, again, as the agents pointed out, this could be used as a six bedroom HMO without the need for planning permission. And so it's difficult to argue that the additional presence of one further individual would give rise to harm over and above that that might currently exist. Absolutely understand the issues that have been mentioned around community cohesion and the impact of HMOs generally in the area. Again, I don't want to repeat what I've said on many occasions before to this committee, that they are issues that we've looked at through the local plan process. And there are areas identified within the local plan going forward, which tries to limit the amount of HMOs, the Dalles area is one. And we're facilitating that through Article Four directions. However, this particular area is not one that's been specifically identified as one of those three within the local plan. And so there is no policy basis which you as a committee have to restrict this on the basis of an over concentration of HMOs. Finally, Chair, if we could just go back to those plans, just to pick up on councillor Hanson's point about the internal spaces. There have been significant amendments since the application was submitted. The dorm has been pulled back slightly, et cetera. And there's also been changes to the internal disposition of spaces associated with this development on the ground floor of the property, together with a small communal area. You've got in the report that the rooms are set out in the agenda document. So you've got a bedroom on the ground floor, three on the first floor and then three within the roof space. And if you've got the plans available, I can't see them at the moment. But if you have got them available to view online, then you will be able to see that. You'll also see, Chair, that there is a yard area at the back which can accommodate a number of bins and in addition to some cycle parking. So for all those reasons, Chair, we have recommended approval. Subject to the conditions set out, happy to answer any further.
Are there any questions for our planning officer?
Chair, I don't have a question. I've just made a call.
Councillor Bradford, I've got to take councillor Conception first. He put his virtual hand up before. You can come in second. Councillor Conception, please.
Thank you, Chair. Could I just ask, John, in relation to these type of applications, I mean, we have seen them many, many occasions on this committee. And we do sympathise with some of the issues residents and objectors raise continually. When you look at these applications, they do comply with all the policies that we currently have, don't they?
They, they.
Refusing them, you know, sometimes our hands are tied in that respect.
Absolutely, councillor Conception. Yes, and that's what the report makes clear. There are policies within the draft local plan where we're looking to try and improve the amount of general communal space. And this application doesn't fully meet that new standard. But obviously, that is a draft proposal and the amount of weight that we can give to that is limited at this stage. Our experience through the planning appeal process is that the planning inspectorate will apply the existing policies to which this, as you say, complies. And therefore, we don't consider there are grounds for refusal because it does comply with our planning standards and indeed our HMO licensing standards.
Councillor Radford, would you like to come in now, please?
Thank you very much, Chairman. John, I'm a little alarmed by the argument you, or perspective you put that, well, if they would give an application, they don't need an application for six. So we should inherently accept that there's only an incremental change to seven? So we should inherently accept that there's only an incremental change to seven. Might be waiting bathroom that they're sharing with five other flat dwellers. So I will just share that comment. I mean, the other news, I mean, I, I, I'll be upfront, Hazel Williams, my former councillor colleague and Lord Mayor of the City, lives only round the corner and I drive down to Elm Vale virtually every other day or every third day or walk over to take papers. Elm Vale is the feeder road for the Estella Road, approximately eighty, ninety housing, all tight terraces. So to, yeah, I think it's delusional to suggest there isn't a parking problem there already. So how many, how many car users would you expect from your seven prospective students? Or, planning law doesn't restrict students, although the applicant's same students, they could be seven individual renters, there's no restriction on the, on the user type, rightly or wrongly. So how many cars do you expect and where will they park?
Chair, through you, I, I absolutely understand the points that councillor Radford has made. I, I, I'm not trying to suggest that you can't consider the application because PD would allow for six. Yes, that there would be an additional person and councillor Radford is absolutely right that this committee is absolutely able to take that further individual into account. I just wanted to make the point that there is a fallback position of six. In relation to the car parking, again, I absolutely agree with councillor Radford. The permission, if you are minded, to approve the recommendation wouldn't limit the proposal to students. It would restrict it to an HMO of seven people. How it's then occupied is a matter for the, the owner of that property. So you as a planning committee, we as officers can't restrict the occupancy to a particular group. And developments around things like car parking are based on our experience and data that is obtained by colleagues in the highways department. I can't give any assurance that this particular application will have a particular number of vehicles associated with it. That will be an impossible task. All I can say is these types of property for multiple occupancy tend to have much lower car ownership rates than other properties. And as I say, that, that, that tends to be our experience with the vast majority of these HMOs. But yeah, there will always be circumstances where perhaps an individual HMO is occupied by different tenants who all have access to a car. Unfortunately, as I say, planning has to make sort of broader judgements. And our experience is that the, the, the car ownership tends to be a lot lower. And so I don't want to put a number on it, councillor Radford. Again, highways colleagues might want to, to step in here as well. But my understanding of Whitland Road is even if there were occupiers with cars, there is sufficient space on the street for on-street car parking to take place.
We now have a question from councillor Cummings.
Thank you, Chair. I, I would like to speak to the developer and he can just give me a yes, no response. I would like to make a proposal that we accept this planning appeal. If he takes it down to five people in residence, it's only, it's only requested the developer. It's down to the developer to say yes or no. Furthermore, it's down to the rest of the committee to accept my amendments.
Well, councillor Cummings, I'm going to hand over to Michael Jones on this one because I think you'll find that this is not legally binding. So could I have a comment either from the legal team or from Michael?
Thank you, Chair. Just for the benefit of members present, we as a committee and yourselves as members have to consider application placed before you on its own merits. There's no applica-, no ability to effectively create a new application. And indeed, as John Hayes has indicated previously, with regard to permitted development rights, if there are six or under occupying these premises, then that'll be covered under permitted development rights and will not require an application coming before us. Therefore, unfortunately, councillor Cummings, we can't consider the amendment you're seeking to propose whilst not commenting the merit or otherwise of it. We are unfortunately required to determine the application before us as it stands.
Thank you. Thanks, Michael. Chairman?
Who's speaking? I don't see a green, a yellow hand.
Sorry, I haven't got a yellow hand on my phone.
Okay, it's Steve again. Yes, councillor Radford, come in.
I think Michael's advice being quite clear to us all and we all should understand that. I think if David, what I'd like to do is move an amendment to reject the application. But will in effect create the situation the applicant can review the preliminary point, come back with a design for six, which actually be a must. That, I'd like, from a progress stage, I'd like to move an amendment to reject the application.
I need to hand over again, Michael, now.
Councillor Radford, at this stage, the Chair hasn't technically moved a resolution in relation to the application. Therefore, there's two options available. Either you seek to move a resolution at this stage and you need to be explicit in terms of the reasons, as may be the case for refusal. And obviously, if that's candid, then that will be taken to the vote, subject to any other amendments received. So obviously, to that stage, just before you do seek to move that, councillor Radford, I believe councillor Hanson has indicated to speak firstly as well. So I would suggest we take councillor Hanson first at this juncture.
Indeed. Thank you, Michael.
Councillor Hanson?
You've been invited to speak, councillor Hanson. Would you unmute, please? Councillor Hanson, you've been invited to come in.
Just to give the chair notes, I intend to move an amendment against the application, Chair.
But we may as well move a resolution.
Just for purposes of clarity for all members listening to proceedings at this point, as, as I alluded to briefly before, the typical procedure within the committee is that we, having dealt with the case officer's summary, the Chair will sum up briefly and then seek to move a resolution to which members of the committee in turn, if they so feel, will move amendments accordingly. In this instance, to move and a resolution in either case, therefore, we have two indications from councillors Radford and Hanson respectively, both indicating that either for councillor Radford, he seeks to move a motion to refuse. And for councillor Hanson, if the Chair were minded to remove approval, then he will seek to move an amendment to refuse. With that in mind, therefore, I think the most appropriate course of action is to take councillor Radford's motion to refuse first. And councillor Radford, if you could please expand on the proposed reasons for refusal.
Thanks very much for your help as always, Michael. I'd like to move that having considered all the evidence and cross-examination by councillors and residents, the councils should refuse the application on the basis of maintaining sustainable communities in the Elm Park area, being predominantly residential community space of family homes. And we wish to protect that sustainable community. We should reject the application as being effectively overcrowding with inadequate bathroom facilities within the property. And we should refuse the application, noting this is a gable end on a very tightly congested terrace street of Whitland Road with Witcroft Road. And that, that further parking could create a, a parking danger at this gable end. I think those are three grounds of quite clear rejection, which I'd like to move. And I'm, I'm doing that mindful of our other councillors' comments as well as my own.
Thank you, councillor Radford. For purposes of ease and also for purposes of clarification, both for yourselves as members and indeed for those speakers present and for those viewing on the live stream, when we come to consider this resolution, in the event that the committee resolves in this manner to refuse an application, the effect isn't immediately refusal of our application. What happens is the resolution is taken forward in the form of a further report to the next available planning committee, which deals with the particular reasons for refusal as proposed by committee. And then it offers either commentary and consideration of those, and if appropriate, very detailed formal planning reasons. Members just are minded to affirm their original decision. So just to confirm councillor Radford, and to paraphrase what you're seeking and will have a significant detrimental impact on the character and sustainability of the area and local community, to the point that that will then have a substantial negative impact on highway safety and with an inadequate provision of internal bathroom facilities and associated parking provision externally. Would that summarise sufficiently for you?
That, that's very helpful. Thank you as always, Michael.
Thank you. Does any member wish to second councillor Radford's motion to refuse?
I would like to second your case.
Thank you, councillor Cummings. We therefore have a valid motion for refusal. And similar to the votes we've conducted for previous items of business, I will go through members in turn. So starting with the Chair, just to be clear, a vote in favour of the motion is a vote to refuse the application for everyone present. So Chair, your vote, please. Thank you. Councillor Conception?
Again.
Thank you. Councillor Thompson?
Because this meets all our current policies and because not all students and not all other types of people either can afford to live in nice accommodation in town, I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm against.
Thank you, Helen. Councillor Cummings? Thank you. Councillor Hanson? You're on mute, Joe. If you just unmute yourself to confirm. If you give a hand gesture, Joe, a function, thank you, that's acceptable, that's clear. Councillor Kennedy?
Councillor Kennedy, can you hear us? Yes, I can, but I can't vote and I'm not taking part in the meeting.
Thank you. Councillor Harris? Just reiterate your vote, please, Billy.
Four.
Thank you. Councillor Juarez?
Four.
Councillor Lavelle?
Four. Four.
Okay, just to confirm, in favour of refusing the application, three members against, one member not voting by virtue of having a declared prior interest. What this therefore means is a report will now come forward to the next available planning committee, addressing the reasons stated within councillor Radford's motion and putting these in the context of relevant planning considerations that seems to be an appropriate reason for refusal if members are minded to affirm that decision. Item of business, which is number nine on today's agenda. Sorry, pardon me, is number six on today's agenda. And relates to the former Bridgend Public site at number 162 Chilwell Valley Road, Liverpool 25 in Belvaile Ward. For purposes of clarity, we do have the agent present for this item as a presentation. So if I ask members to bear with us very briefly whilst I ask colleagues to display the presentation clearly on screen for everyone's benefit. And then I would ask Mr. Rainbird, the agent for the, the site, to then address us accordingly. That's now visible on screen now. Mr. Rainbird, address committee accordingly.
I'm unmuted. Can you hear me?
We can, thank you.
Excellent. Good morning, Chair and members of the planning committee. My name is Tim Rainbird and I'm the agent acting on behalf of the applicant TJ Morris Limited. If we could show you the first slide of the presentation, please. Excellent, thank you. In December 2016, outline planning commission was granted on this site for the erection of a food store. Today, we're asking you to support your officer's recommendation to resolve to grant full planning commission for a new home bargain store. The site is well known, having been previously considered by this committee in March of this year. It extends to 0.7 hectares and is located approximately 450 metres from Belvaile District Centre. It is principally occupied by the former Bridgend pub, which closed around five years ago, and a William Hill betting shop, which is at lease expiry. As a result of its vacant state, it has become a magnet for feeding vandalism and flight tipping. Should planning commission be secured, the proposed redevelopment of the site will make a significant contribution to the local area, including substantial public benefits at a time when the need has never been greater. Next slide, please. For home bargains of 25,000 square feet with dedicated access and servicing arrangements and custom car parking for 93 vehicles. A comprehensive landscaping scheme which respects the tree preservation order and replaces lost trees with larger, higher quality specimens. A significant package of hardware improvement works amounting to around £250,000 of investment by the applicant. Relocation of the bus stop on Chilwell Valley Road outside the site and a new left-only HTV. Next slide, please. The retail unit will be occupied by Home Bargains, the trading arm of the Merseyside-based, family-owned and run discount variety retailer TJ Morris Limited. TJ Morris Limited and Home Bargains are household names on Merseyside, so they need little introduction. With over 24,000 employees nationwide and more than 550 stores, TJ Morris is continuing its rapid organic growth, often acquiring sites in areas where it already has an existing representation, which is the case in Belvaile. Prescott in Knowlesley is a very good example of a similar situation where a new store was developed around 500 metres from the existing Prescott Shopping Centre store and both continued to trade successfully. Consequently, there are no plans to close the Belvaile Shopping Centre store should planning commission be granted for this development. Next slide, please. The applicant has very recently met and listened carefully to the concerns of Belvaile's ward councillors who are representing their local residents. Those discussions have led to several tariffations and suggested changes to the plans. These include reduced servicing hours. Whilst your environmental health officer was satisfied with the wider hours set out in the officer report, Home Bargains has confirmed that it can operate its servicing arrangements within the proposed store trading hours, namely 8am to 8pm Monday, Saturday and 10am to 6pm on Sundays. We've also confirmed that Home Bargains will only trade for six hours on Sundays, in line with the Sunday Trading Act. The plans include the retention of the southern boundary wall, which sits at the end of the residents' gardens to the south of the site. Inside that boundary wall, on the applicant's land, a two metre high closed boarded timber fence will be erected, offering further oral and visual mitigation of the scheme. A revised landscaping scheme is now also proposed, further enhancing the key corner of the site at the junction of Chilwell Valley Road and King's Drive. And finally, Home Bargains has confirmed that it has no plans to close its former Belvaile Shopping Centre store. Next slide, please. To summarise the overall planning case as articulated in the officer report, we have satisfied all relevant planning policies. The principle of development is supported, there are no sequentially preferable sites. Planning policy dictates that no retail impact assessment is required. In any event, Home Bargains has no plans to close its Belvaile Shopping Centre store. The proposal will lead to an overall improvement in cycle pedestrian accessibility and overall safety of the local highway network. The landscaping scheme respects the TPO and mitigates any loss of trees. And residential amenity has been carefully considered and assessed and the interests of occupiers of adjoining properties will be safeguarded. Next slide, please. To conclude, the long anticipated redevelopment of the site will deliver real investment in Belvaile, resulting in the regeneration of an unutilised brownfield site that has been subject to antisocial behaviour. At least 50 jobs will be created when the store is operational. In fact, Home Bargain stores of this size have the potential to create upwards of 70 jobs. Further jobs will be created through the demolition and construction process. Overall, the investment in the site will exceed £5 million. This is substantial and will result in multiplier effects to the benefit of the local authority. Importantly, this second home bargain store in Belvaile will increase consumer choice locally and improve residents' accessibility to discounted convenience goods. And should members endorse the officer's recommendation this morning, demolition of the site will be progressed quickly with the new store operational in 2021. Thank you.
Are there any questions? Councillor Cummings seems to have his.
Thank you. I have two issues about this proposal. My first is, could this proposal go forwards? Could you guarantee local contractors will take on this job of demolition and building? And two, what is the circumstance in the context of this proposal moving forward and it's up and running when deliveries will along the establishment? It'll be very early in the morning or very late at night. And I have an issue about noise issues.
To regard the local contractors, as with any contractor appointment, we will have to appoint available and free to undertake the work. And we'll obviously go to a local base as well as a more regional and nationalised base of contractors to ensure best value. But as far as possible, local labour will be used. It still has to be commercially viable to do so. And on the servicing hours, whilst the environmental help officer, 11pm, following discussions with the board councillors, we've now reduced those hours to be proposed as a new planning condition, which is 8am to 8pm Monday to Saturday. And Sundays, which align the trading hours of the store. So, previously wider hours were proposed, but TJ Morris can take deliveries here within store trading hours to limit the disturbance for residents to the south of the site and to the west.
Right, so that's within the three hours, the deliveries will come about by Friday.
Now, councillor Thompson is not going to be voting on this, but we did allow councillor Juarez, the usual way when she wasn't voting. So, I'll invite your comment, councillor Thompson.
My hand was actually raised in a, well, I thought I'd lowered it. I raised it at the beginning just to remind everybody that I had a bit of an ex-boo. I don't have to comment at this stage.
Okay, thank you councillor Thompson. It's councillor Cardy and councillor Hanson. Councillor Kennedy, please.
I'm interested in the comment that the home bargain store within the local shopping centre is not going to close. I'm just wondering what the rationale for that is, because one of the things in the report is about the economic danger of the shopping centre, which has already got a number of empty outlets. So, what is the rationale between having the one on the corner and the one within the centre?
Shall I take that question, Chair?
Sorry, I've heard from you. Yes, please.
Sure. So, the rationale is that TJ Morris's business model does allow them to often trade two stores in relative proximity to each other. So, I referenced in my presentation the example in Prescott, which is pretty close to where we are here. And in that case, we have Prescott Shopping Centre store, and we had a proposed out-of-centre retail unit, similarly sized to that, that is proposed on the junction of King's Drive and Chilwell Band. And following the grant consent for the new store out of town, the erection of that store, the existing town centre store continued to trade. And I believe Prescott Shopping Centre and Belvaile Shopping Centre are not indifferent insofar as they've both struggled with vacancies over the years. But Home Bargains continues to trade in both locations. Now, that's anticipated here, and the commercial rationale is that the business model allows that to happen.
Now, councillor Hanson?
Thank you, Chair. It's a comment. If you remember, back in March, there were a number of issues, a number of objections come from local councillors and local residents. And one of the things that we asked as a committee, that the organisation went and had conversations with the local councillors and the community to try and resolve the outstanding differences. That was not allowing this application to move forward. And again, it's perhaps a lesson that we need to be speaking to other developers about the importance of having those conversations with local councillors and local residents to try and alleviate any issues and problems prior to them getting to committee. And I'm absolutely delighted that the Home Bargains have been able to come here today and say those issues have been resolved. So, thank you to both Home Bargains and thank you to the local councillors for getting round this able and resolving those outstanding issues. There's only one sort of concern presupposing this application is passed today, is in relation to the Bridgian and the, as you pointed out, the ISO that that is creating within the area. And could I ask or could I request that using an organisation look to very, very speedily get on site and get that knocked down? Because it is creating issues for not yourselves, but also for the local councillors and residents in the area. And I'll close on that point, Chair.
I don't seem to have any other questions for Tim Rainbird, so thank you for coming along to him.
Pleasure.
Excuse me?
A pleasure, thank you.
Okay. So, I know it seems like Edward Landor to speak in objection, who's the agent, I believe, for a number of residents. Edward, would you like to come in now, please? Would you like to unmute Mr Landor and come in? Yes, hello. Would you like to deliver your presentation?
Thank you. Good morning, members and Chair. My name is Edward Landor. I act on behalf of Vale Local Business Association. The association represents local businesses in the area, many of whom have premises at Belvaile Shopping Centre. I addressed the planning committee at its meeting on the 10th of March, when members voted to refuse the application. The application was reconsidered on the 31st of March during the lockdown period, and the minutes reported at the applicant's request. These are challenging times for the retail sector. The High Street is under great pressure, store closures and job losses are a daily occurrence, and the current health crisis brings more problems. These pressures have intensified significantly in the current pandemic. The High Street is much love for the vibrancy and vitality it brings our cities, towns and suburban centres. Belvaile is the High Street equivalent in this area. It's designated in the current and emerging local plan as a district centre. The policy in the old and new plan is to enhance and maintain existing centres. There are at least 11 units vacant in Belvaile Shopping Centre. It is vulnerable, exposed to adverse market pressures, and less resilient to challenging market conditions than centres in more affluent areas. The trading environment is significantly more challenging in the post-COVID era. All the applicant's retail assessments, vacancy rates, retail impact analysis and sequential assessments were undertaken in July 2019. That's over 14 months ago. Market conditions have dramatically changed since. And if these were assessments were for trees or ecology, they would be regarded as out of date. Vacant shops and boarded-up retail units and increasing number of charity outlets are evident everywhere. Belvaile Centre is particularly vulnerable, not least because the applicant currently occupies a unit in this centre. Belvaile is an example where planning policies are designed to protect communities, people's livelihoods, and access to services should be rigorously applied. Nevertheless, it's proposed to grant planning permission for a large format store with 100 car parking spaces targeting car-travelling shoppers. In the light of climate change and carbon footprint concerns, this is highly unsustainable. It's proposed to grant planning permission for a large format store in an outer-stemately 500 metres from Belvaile Centre. Thus, the prospects of linked shopping trips between the proposed store and the centre are most unlikely. In 2016, a wide-ranging planning consent was granted for a variety of uses on this site. Draw public house offices and bookmaker. This was an outline planning commission with all matters reserved for subsequent approval. Faces consistent with permission for such wide-ranging uses in a primarily residential area was somewhat controversial. The application before you seeks approval for a large non-food store without conditions on the class of goods that may be sold on the premises. The report in front of you is comprehensive and well-executed in many respects. However, some vital issues have been ignored. There is no designation of Belvaile as a district centre and no reference to UD Policy S7, which seeks to maintain and enhance designated district centres. Without reference to such matters, the report is incomplete and easily misconstrued. To disregard your planning officer's recommendation is a big step, but there are overwhelming reasons why planning policy ought to be rigorously applied in this case. Thank you very much for your time.
We have a question from councillor Cummings, followed by a question from councillor Kennedy. Councillor Cummings, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Chair. Edward, I know Belvaile Shopping opened up in the early mid 1970s. I've probably been there for a long time. So, my question is this. I understand your arguments and I'm not against your arguments. I'm just asking a question with regard to the centre itself and where Home and Bargain is based in the centre. As I mentioned in March, I was of the assumption that they could utilise the other empty units within the centre. Although I'm of the assumption that those units are sporadic and intermittent and cannot be merged together. Am I right or wrong in that question?
Well, I think obviously in merging units together always produces, you know, there are design issues when you try and merge units together where they are, and it may require relocating some stores, yes. So, there are always some challenges. But I don't, in my opinion, I don't think it's an impossible feat. It can be achieved. But there has to be a will, and it is a matter of commercial negotiation. I accept that.
Councillor Kennedy, would you like to put your question now, please?
I think Mr Landor is getting to the real basis of whatever concern I may have about this application. But the question I would ask for him, ask of him, is what is his concern about this particular company opening another outlet if it is maintaining its current outlet in the shopping centre, which I happen to know very well, because it's very near where my mother is, in a residential home. So, somebody who wishes to shop at Home and Bargains can either go in the centre and go in their unit there, or may go in the unit that is proposed. If they go in the unit that is proposed, who are they taking business from other than the Home and Bargain Centre within the actual shopping centre? So, it seems to me that your concerns maybe, I mean, I'll give you, you have an opportunity to respond, of course, may be more to do with competition than they are to do with loss of trade from the actual shopping centre.
Okay, that's off the mark, Edward.
Thank you, Chair. Those are well-made points. And obviously, it is a comfort that the Home Bargains has indicated that it will operate with both stores in place. But of course, there are no guarantees, are there? That's their position today. It is true that primarily trade draw to the new store will presumably come from their existing outlet in Belvaile. And clearly, they will assess how, you know, the impact on competition on that store and the viability of that store in the future. But it's not a guarantee that the store is going to remain open in perpetuity in the centre. Obviously, that's a matter that they'll review, and I'm sure it will be reviewed.
Thank you. There don't seem to be any further questions, so. Yes, Stuart, I'm going over to you now. So, I'm going to hand over to our planning officer now, Stuart Park.
Thank you, Chair. As members will recall, this was originally placed before them in March earlier this year with a recommendation for approval. A member's resolved to refuse, which was predominantly loss of green space, impact on residential amenity and highway safety. Those three matters are dealt with in an addendum to the report. It's the first three, four pages on pages 74 to 77 of your papers, which deals with all of those issues in turn. Your office is still satisfied that the scheme is acceptable with regards to all of those proposals, insofar that it's capable of being approved. In terms of the residential amenity side of things, you've heard from the applicant that they've agreed to reduce the servicing hours to eight o'clock at night. It's worth remembering as well that this premises is lawful use as a pub, so it could technically operate unlimited because it's not a restricted hours facility. So, this would actually bring the hours that it could operate to down. So, the reasons as to why your office is still consider it's acceptable are detailed in the report. In terms of the specific comments made by Mr Landor, I'd refer you to your table comments, where we addressed some of the issues that he raised. And basically, what we need to understand about retail impact is that this store is of a size that currently doesn't require any retail impact assessments. So, we're not actually allowed to consider the impact on trade draw and things like that, even though they undertook such an exercise. Sequentially, they've gone through that process, it's within 14 months. As things councillor Kennedy touched on it, about potential for working units around to create bigger units. In the real world, that's very difficult to do because different shops and businesses will have different length leases, so they will all come up at different times. It was not really reasonable for a shopping centre to hold units back and not lease them whilst waiting for other leases to come on board. So, we're satisfied that the sequential test approached is still valid, and that there's no sequentially preferable sites that could accommodate the store. In terms of the two policies that Mr Landor references, again, I'd refer you to your table notes. The policy S5 identifies district centres across the city and advises that we might maintain vitality and viability when considering out-of-centre proposals, as primarily dealt with under S12, which deals with out-centre retailing. So, we're satisfied that, for the reasons I've said, you don't need to do a retail impact assessment for a store of this size. But that policy is dealt with through this note and through the original report. In terms of policy S7, that talks about maintaining and improving existing centres. But that's primarily aimed at enhancing the appearance of accessibility to them, as opposed to the retail impact side of things, which S12 deals with. So, we're happy that the report is sound and deals with all the relevant issues. And for the reasons stated in the report, Chair, we're still happy to recommend that the application be approved. I'm aware that the applicant, following conversations with the councillors, has submitted some amended plans, for example, plants and more trees and things like that. So, if members are minded to approve, we will need to tweak two conditions that are in your papers, condition two and condition 20. But I can provide the relevant wording to Mike Jones if that's what members would like to do. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chair?
Well, we seem to have a question from councillor Cummings, and as he hasn't put his virtual hand down.
Thank you. I'll finish my question now. Stuart, what I see here is Home and Bargain undermining the shopping hub of the Belvaile Shopping Centre. As what Shaun said, the statements of no plans to close shops, what we've all heard in many spheres, we have no plans to do what is action. in many spheres, we have no plans to do what, to do this action. And then viability, as you said before, well, I don't think this action maintains the viability of Belleville Shopping Centre because there are no guarantees that that shop will close in Belleville Shopping Centre. And when regard to the plot that they want to use, that can be utilised by many other providers, easily utilised by many other providers. So on those issues, I'm not going to support this proposal.
Chair. I'd put who's trying to come in here.
Yeah, if you don't mind Chairman.
Yes, that's sort of like, it's just, the trouble is that you don't have a virtual hand appearing and you don't have your photographs, I can't see your actual hand going up, Steve. But yes, you can ask your question, go ahead.
One of the questions I always ask myself when dealing with a controversial application, setting aside any arguments that we can't entertain, we can't refuse or approve something because of arguments of competition, I think we're all quite clear on that. But the question I always ask is, if we didn't approve this application for the site, what would actually be the realistic prospect of what would happen with the site? Will we continue to see a continuation of a direct pub? Will we see an HMO? Will there be another retailer? From our office's advice, if there was a refusal, and I'm not suggesting there should be, because it goes in grounds of competition, it's ground for us to do a refusal anyway, what are the risks, what are the realistic prospects for the site if this application didn't get approved?
I'll hand over directly to you Stuart, to answer that one please.
Thanks Chair. Yeah. In terms of what would happen to the site, that's really only a question that the site owner can answer because he would control the site, we can only react to proposals that are put before us. But it's not beyond the realms of possibility that an application, I don't know, for a HMO or something like that, may potentially come forward for assessments and clearly compliant with your policies and was approved, then there is a possibility that that may come to fruition. But it's very much crystal ball gazing, I'm afraid.
No, I'm just saying, I know the owner controls the site, but from your knowledge as an informed person who's in the locality, what do you think would be the probable aspects? On a judgmental of, you know, if this application is in the group, what else can we envisage would happen inside? From the experience you have, I mean, you would probably have more experience most of that part of the city.
I'm sorry, I feel that, you know, we've got to consider the applications that are in front of us always by planning committee. And I don't feel that it's appropriate that we should be speculating about what might a commercial interest, might another commercial interest might come forward. Unless Michael Jones is prepared to pull me out of order, I would say this is not appropriate to our considerations. We have, yes, all right, come in please Michael.
Thanks Chair. The limit on what can be said essentially will be that, as with any other application site, in the event that we didn't improve a particular permission at this point, it will be open for third parties, including the owners of that site, to potentially bring forward other proposals, at which point we would then have to consider them on their respective merits. But as to what the nature of those proposals will be, that will purely depend on the considerations of the individuals or organisations who chose to make such applications.
Right. And now it's councillor Moana Juarez, followed by councillor Kennedy. Councillor Juarez.
Thank you Chair. The proposal to me seems, you know, seems fine, I don't really have a problem with it. You know, the location is in, is in need of regeneration, you know, this, that building is empty for years, I think being empty for five years, it can't, it can't be left in that state, you know, as an eyesore. You know, Belleville Shopping Centre is quite busy, you know, when I go there sometimes it's quite difficult to find a car parking space. You know, and also. You know, the shopping centres go through periods of change and sometimes that change has to happen, you know, maybe in Belleville there's been times where too many units have sold similar products. So, you know, I don't think you can blame Home and Bargains for that, you know, that another unit sells very similar stuff to them. But, you know, I think there is a problem sometimes accessing the shopping centre via the car park because there is a shortage of certain days. I think, you know, the unit, the former pub, that needs to be regenerated and I don't see any other options in the future. I don't think we can sit here and wait another five years to, for somebody to come up with a proposal to regenerate that unit. I think, you know, to me, I'm not going to sort of reject the application because I think it makes sense that, you know, this level of investment is carried forward today.
Councillor Kennedy, I think you need to unmute, I cannot hear you.
Begging pardon, beg your pardon, it's not often I make reference to what somebody else on the committee has said, but I will address what councillor Cummings said in his rationale for voting against this proposal. What he said was that Home and Bargains were undermining the local district shopping centre, but then indicated that there could be other providers on the site for which planning applications are being, planning application is being sought. That indicates that councillor Cummings may have been happy if it wasn't Home and Bargains making the application, but some other commercial enterprise. My question for Stuart Clark is, is the identity of the actual applicant ever a reason for voting against a planning application?
Thank you Chair. Now, what you're considering is the use and it's a land use and that will run with the land regardless of who the operator is, whether it's Home Bargain, M&amp;S, Tesco, Morrisons, whoever. So you're not being asked to consider an application by Home and Bargain even though they are the applicants, you're being asked to approve a retail use on the site. And I think it might just be worth at this point just to try and clarify a bit on the retail impact side of things, is as a council, in terms of national policy, there's a limit of two and a half thousand square metres that triggers the need for retail impact assessment and we as a council consider that too high. As part of the local plan that's gone forward, we are recommending, as we're allowed to, is to reduce that trigger down to a different level and we are currently proposing three hundred square metres. The problem that we have is that the local plan hasn't been adopted yet, so we are bound by national guidance, which means we can only seek and assess retail impact currently at two and a half thousand square metres. This store falls underneath that limit, which is why, as you've been advising the report previously, we're not allowed to currently consider it. Now, in twelve months' time, if the local plan went through and the planning inspector agreed that lower trigger, we would be in a position where we could legitimately take that assessment and use it as a reason for approval or refusal. But as we sit here today, current national policy means we have to default to the MPF figure of two and a half thousand square metres for the trigger for retail impact.
Thank you Stuart.
The site has been empty now for five years, so I struggle with the concept from councillor Cummings that there are sorts of people following Home and Bargains and developing other stuff. The reality is, that is not the reality of what councillor Cummings is talking about. In terms of if rejected today, I would expect that they, the challenges that are societal, it will attract more vandalises, antisocial behaviour, and eyesores to the community that lives in Belleville. I also think that it's fairly disingenuous when a business comes along and says we intend to keep the store in Belleville open.
Cummings, would you like to come in now?
Yes, thank you Chair. I'm not going to talk about individuals because I think that's quite trivial. One thing I want to state again is come back to Stuart and say that this planning application is for retail use, because authors have said, I'm against Home and Bargain, I'm not against Home and Bargain, this is a retail use. So my response to that retail use application is this, why have a retail use application for that block of land when there is a hub? So two, three hundred yards down the road and established there from the 1970s? That is my question. Second point is, what I said about no plans, right, well, anyone can say, I have no plans to do this, that. A definite statement, that is very.
But that in itself doesn't prove the food, the centre. As long as the applicant can satisfy, as an instance, there was no obligation to do so framework triggers, and that sequentially there's no unit within those centres that could accommodate store of the size they're proposing, then that removes any reason for, not forcing them, but for saying that they would have to locate in that centre. And they've done that and we've assessed that and we're satisfied that there are no sequentially preferable sites in the centre that could accommodate a store of this size. And then as I've said before, there's no. From two and a half thousand metres to three hundred metres. So we sit here today, we're bound by the, and that's the trigger for retail impact that we have to consider. And whether we like it or not, they don't need to do it and we can't consider it. So that's the answer to the first one. In terms of the second one, you're right, contain a presence in that centre. I can't answer that question, I'm afraid, that's only a question that Home and Bargain can answer. But it's not unusual for multiple, for stores to have multiple units. You know, there's two in the city centre, for example, there's one in Lord Street, one in St John's that trade happily. But that's more of a matter for Home and Bargain as opposed to myself, I think.
Now, there being no further questions, I want to move to the vote. So can I move that the recommendation be approved? Is that agreed?
Thank you Chair. Just before we do conduct the vote, any members wishing to move an amendment to that at all? If so, now is the time.
I would please, Mike.
Go on councillor Cummings.
Mine would be to request the planner to go back to Belleville and the management of Belleville, try and seek arrangements to use the empty units or repairing the time where they could, they could use those units. Same amount of, and in turn, that would support the hub, the shopping hub of the Belleville area.
Thank you councillor Cummings. Unfortunately, I'm going to rule that amendment out of order for the simple reason that it doesn't address the particular application before us and instead deals with alternative sites which are not actually subject to the application before us, with it on in mind. I will now revert to the chair's motion before us, the effect of which will be to approve the application. Therefore, taking members' votes in turn, those in favour and very much against or abstaining, please indicate when I call out your name. So first to the chair. Thank you. Councillor Conception. Thank you. Councillor Cummings.
And will you accept this?
I will do, thank you councillor Cummings. Councillor Hanson. Thank you. Councillor Kennedy.
Agreed.
Thank you. Councillor Marat. Councillor Lovell. Councillor Juarez. And lastly councillor Radford.
Agreed, I'd be delighted if they want to open a store in Tewbrooke.
Thank you for your comment councillor Radford. Just to confirm the outcome of the vote, that is eight members voting in favour, one member voting against, one member not voting by virtue of previous comments on the application. That therefore means that the application is approved, subject to the additional condition revisions as referenced by the case officer and which will be reflected in the published minutes. Moving on with our items before us today, as you recall at the start of proceedings, I confirm that agenda item seven, in respect of William Jett at Way, have been withdrawn from consideration today. We'll now therefore move straight on to agenda item eight, which relates to Brunswick Key on Atlantic Way in Liverpool Three, which is in Riverside Ward. For this item, we have the agent present to deliver a presentation for us, so I would ask my colleague to just put the presentation up on screen to assist. And once that comes on, the agent, Mr G, if you could unmute your microphone and introduce the presentation, thank you. Just ask colleagues who are not presenting or speaking, please mute your microphones at this stage as well, so you don't disrupt the audio feed. Mr G, can you hear us?
I can hear you, yeah, can you hear me?
Thank you. Can you see the slide clearly on screen?
I can't yet, I'm afraid, no.
Okay, it should be coming up very shortly.
Right, okay, I've got it. Okay, members will be familiar with the site's location, it sits on the southern outskirts of the city centre, it's a cleared barren former industrial site that has seen no employment use or practically no other use for approximately twenty years or so. It's unsightly brown for a land, it's one of the last key development opportunities in south Liverpool that flank the river. It's accessed from Atlantic Way to the south, Brunswick Dock itself forms the eastern edge of the site and the river and the historic dock gate form the boundary to the west. Slide two please. Sorry, sorry, can I go back one slide? Right, okay. Right, there should be a slide two actually, there was a slide two in the presentation, it doesn't seem to be coming up.
There is a slight time lag, Mr G, given what you're viewing is the live feed on the website, as opposed to colleagues on committee are viewing through Teams, so there is a time delay in what you're seeing. as opposed to colleagues on committee are viewing through Teams. So there is a time delay in what you're seeing.
Okay, okay. I could see slide three before, but I'll just 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 wait for slide two.
Just for purpose of clarity, Mr. G, what are you expecting to see on slide two, just so we can go back to the the correct slide for you?
Yeah, it's 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 top left hand corner. It's it's got the number two and it's entitled History and the Site Today. And there's an image of a skyscraper on the left hand side.
We don't seem to have it transferred in the presentation before us, unfortunately. So if I can ask you to move on one slide.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Well, just if I can, if I could talk about what I was going to say for slide two briefly, but you can't see it. It was just simply just to, again, highlight the point with 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 photographs that the site is unsightly in brownfield land, uh, not been used for a long time. And just picking up on, I think a couple of objectors have made the point about the negative impact of this scheme on jobs. Um, we don't quite understand that point because this, if if this is to be approved, it'll it'll sustain around about two hundred construction jobs over a period of around about three years during its completion. Uh, the commercial units alone, which form part of the scheme, will generate in the region of fifty to sixty new jobs. So that that compares to the the zero jobs that are currently on the site and the zero jobs that have been on the site for the last two decades. Um, I also wanted to make there's there's no trees or pictures of any note on the site. There are no listed buildings. It's not in or close to a conservation area. Uh, it falls outside both the World Heritage Site and its buffer zone in a mixed area comprising employment uses, commerce children's play facilities, a go-kart racing centre, a hotel. Um, to the immediate north is an established residential area, Cuthbert's Key, South Kerry Key, South Freddick Key. And new residential developments recently been approved to the immediate south on Summers Road. And the photograph on slide two is also showed the the condition of the footpath and and cycle path, the riverside path that runs along the western edge of the site adjacent to the river. Um, it's not a particularly attractive section of path. It's not particularly well well using, certainly people don't tend to loiter there. It's a little bit isolated, narrow and barren. Um, it's the sort of section that people prefer to get through quickly rather than spend time. So part of this application is to carry out our very high quality public realm enhancements along that section uh to make it far more attractive in a place where people will feel safe and will want to spend time. Uh, the site, and this was my reference to a skyscraper, the the members might recall that some years ago in two thousand and six, the the site was subject to a a planning application for a fifty-one storey tower, which, following a public inquiry, the inspector actually recommended to be approved. But that decision was ultimately dismissed by the Secretary of State. And my client, who's now on the site, around twenty years, recognized that skyscraper probably went a little too far. And frankly, some of that height in this location is now unlikely to be viable. So we spent the last fourteen years, there's been various attempts to bring something positive for the site and plenty of positive discussions with your officers. But each time, those those attempts have been scuppered by the onset of previous economic recessions until now. And and all of that work has led to the scheme that's now before you. So can we move on to slide three, please? Uh, right, okay. So the inspiration for the design and the layout stems from the maritime dockland environment and in particular Liverpool's association with dazzle ships. Um, and for those who are not aware, dazzle ships, and I I wasn't aware until I got involved in this project, dazzle ships, you can see an example on the bottom right, were adorned with a painting technique as a way of camouflage in ships during the First World War. And they usually employed contrasting stripes to create an optical illusion that would break up the ship's shape and obscure its movement in the water, which would make it difficult for enemy submarines to destroy it. Uh, and there's a strong connection between dazzle ships and Liverpool. And some of you might recognise the painting on the bottom left of the slide, which is entitled Dazzle Ships in Dry Dock in Liverpool. It's a nineteen nineteen painting by the artist Edward Wadsworth, whose day job was actually to design camouflage dazzle ships in Liverpool during the war. Anyway, the significance of the dazzle ship concept from a design point of view is that the buildings have been designed to fade into the background when viewed from a distant, almost as if they are camouflaged. So also inspired by the historic docks, the proposal will use predominantly natural materials, stone, metal and timber, which will sit well with the context and townscape and reinforce solidity and robustness in in what is an exposed location. And on that note, it's worth highlighting that this scheme has been thoroughly tested for its wind microclimate. As you'll see from later images, the architects has introduced layered fragmentation of the material palette with the heavier materials at the base to create a lower visual centre of gravity and lighter materials on the upper levels to blur against the sky. Uh, and the ultimate design solution followed no fewer than four pre-application meetings and separate discussions with Historic England, who are very supportive of the whole design.